This is NHTV Two, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's First Selectman, joined as always by our Second Selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our Third Selectwoman, Ms. Sally Bewemy. I'd like to ask everyone to stand for our Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Item number two, any comments to tonight's agenda? Mary? Mary White.
Mary White Summerling, I was just wondering if, when the agenda gets to item 10, 12, and 14, those are about proposed ordinances, and after the presentation is made explaining what they're about, and after the board asks any questions, I was wondering if you would be willing or open to opening that up to the public in case somebody has a question that hasn't been answered. I was just wondering about that.
Well, the answer would have been yes, but here's the reality. Unfortunately, we're not quite prepared tonight for these ordinances.
Oh, okay.
So, we're gonna have a kind of a general conceptual discussion, and I'm gonna propose, you know, for Sally and Bill also to vote on, to propose that we table them and then redo this portion of this agenda on September 4th. And then, we're gonna examine some options as to whether or not we should bring these ordinances to the General Town Meeting, which is the end of September, for budget transfers and add that on, or perhaps call a special meeting between the 4th and, let's say, the 22nd or 24th, whenever that date is. Or, after we've flushed this through, so to speak, when everyone has had a chance to read these ordinances, then we vote on it on the 4th to do exactly what you've suggested, Mary, and then we decide whether we want to have a meeting before the annual town meeting. That's kind of where we're at tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But I think it's a good question, and the answer would have been yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Sally, does that make sense from your standpoint?
Yes. I'm aware there was some trouble getting the ordinances ready for tonight.
We do have one, though. It's the bus ordinance, but we just kind of seen this, we just saw it within the last hour or so, I think.
Right. Yeah, it just came through.
So, I think that, in fairness, we've had these discussions before. If the ordinances aren't ready, we think that the board should review it, the public should listen to it, and then we have the option of postponing it till the next meeting, which I'm proposing.
Right.
All right. But...
And they're all the same ordinance, ordinance 190, just different sections.
Different articles.
Different articles, rather.
Dealing with different, slightly different issues. Yes, I agree, we should have the ordinance before us, before we talk about it.
All right, so we'll go to item number three, and that's the approval of the Board of Selectmen meeting, those minutes on July 3rd.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I will second Sally's approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, Sally, you asked me to put something on the agenda.
Yes, I think we could handle this fairly quickly. You might recall last October, at the regular Board of Selectmen meeting, I put on the agenda a discussion of the sewer use, and I have it here again tonight. The Water Pollution Control Authority, also known as the Sewer Commission, generally calculates the new rate for the sewer use that comes due in October at their September meeting, which I attended last year and gave an analysis similar to the analysis that I gave at the October meeting, but it was too late because it was already set. And you might recall that I was concerned that the single-family residences and two-family residences were paying a disproportionately high percentage of the revenue for the operation of our sewer system. At that time, the residences were about 52 percent of the ground list, but they were paying 76 percent of the revenue versus the commercial industrial, which made up 38 percent, 38.3 to be exact, percent of our ground list, and they were only paying 23 percent. So, we went through that analysis, and it seemed that both you and Mr. Piper were impressed with the analysis, and that maybe it was time for some, rather than apply an equal percentage increase, whenever there is an increase, that it was time to adjust that per thousand-gallon fee to align the contribution of revenue more appropriately with the assessed value. And you had agreed with that. So, I did talk with Andy, our town engineer, and he explained that he's working on that, and that he intends to meet with you...
Yes.
...Tuesday. You, of course, as our First Selectman, the Sewer Commission is one of the four boards and commissions where you have voting rights, so you certainly have an impact on that commission. And it is my understanding that attempts will be made to make a recalculation based on my analysis last year and adjust accordingly. So, I was happy to hear that, and so I'm satisfied with that, and if you have anything else to add, you can, otherwise I'm pretty much finished.
Yeah, I'll just kind of sum it up to your points here, that we're gonna be doing it. That's definite. We spent a lot of time, I do, with myself, the town engineers, WPCA, Rich Monaco, with the Water Pollution Control Authority. It's outside the purview of this board, it's outside the purview of the Board of Finance, but I'm actively involved with it, with Andy Bevelacqua. The answer is gonna be yes. We're gonna be, there'll be an increase for commercial. We're not quite sure the number yet, but that'll be unveiled and presented in September to WPCA.
Well, I'll be sure to attend the meeting, and I appreciate that you and the Sewer Commission acknowledged the merits of my arguments and are making changes accordingly. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that? All right. All right, so, let's move to item number five, okay? And I'll have either you or Sally read this. Bill, you or Sally?
Number... Why don't you take this one, Bill?
Sure, thank you, Sally. Item five on the agenda is to consider and act upon a resolution authorizing the sale and disposal of a town vehicle, Senior Center Bus Two. I'll make a resolution, resolve that the town of North Haven authorizes the auction and disposal of the following surplus town vehicle. The Director of Procurement and Administration, Richard Monaco, is authorized to determine acceptable bid offers and/or to take said vehicle to alternate auction locations. All revenue received will return to the town's general fund. The vehicle is the Senior Center Bus Two, Ford E-350, Super Duty Bus, VIN number 1FD3E35S45DA16146.
I'll move the resolution as read. This is something that we do routinely. I believe we purchased a new vehicle for the Senior Center, so this one is older, and we routinely try to sell our vehicles to recoup as much money to the general fund as we can. So, I'm supportive of this.
All right. Thank you. In the discussion, just to kind of sum up this portion, this is something that we've had a lot of success doing. We take these older vehicles, we send them out to auction. Many times, we get from $5,000 to $10,000, depending upon the vehicle, and we put it back, as was just mentioned, into the general fund. So, we're all on board with this, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I'll do number seven.
Yes.
Item seven on our agenda is a discussion of positive referral report received from the Planning and Zoning Commission pursuant to Section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes regarding the potential amendment of certain provisions of the agreement, including easements, recorded in Volume 500, page 319 of the North Haven Land Records relating to parking for the proposed development of 16 elderly housing units at 23 Maiden Lane. I guess I could read eight as well, because they go together. So, we will be considering, consider and vote on whether to authorize First Selectman Michael J. Frieda to execute an amendment to agreement, including easements, recorded at Volume 500, page 319, of the North Haven Land Records on behalf of the town in the event that the Planning and Zoning Commission approves applications submitted by or on behalf of Maiden Lane Properties LLC for the development of 16 elderly housing units at 23 Maiden Lane to provide parking for said units and to authorize Town Council to amend the draft of said amendment presented to the Board of Selectmen to include all required revisions following commission approval.
Very good.
So, why don't we have a discussion before I read the resolution?
Well, I thank Jeffrey DeNarfo for being here. I thank, of course, Joe Porto here. So, Joe, I thought made a great presentation, the last meeting, we had a couple of meetings ago. This is something we're all on board with, but we'll have a little bit more explanation here, and Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, thank you. So, back in 1996, the town had entered into an agreement with the then-property owner at 23 Maiden Lane, and under that agreement, there were cross-easements that were exchanged. The town currently has, at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, a site plan application that is, as you probably heard at a prior meeting, a mixed-use development, including 16 elderly housing units. And, of course, there's parking requirements that the regulations require and that a site plan approval would require, and the way that the current agreement is structured with the cross-easements, it's not satisfactory to the Planning and Zoning Commission because there's no assurance that the residents of the 16 elderly housing units will have the necessary 16 parking spaces. So, what the proposed amendment to the agreement does is it amends that 1996 agreement to clarify that 16 of the parking spaces at 23 Maiden Lane will be used solely for the parking of vehicles by residents of the proposed 16 elderly housing units. There was a referral that you made to the Planning and Zoning Commission under Connecticut General Statute 8-24, which is required because of the town's easement interest, and you received a report dated July 15th from the Commission with a positive referral by the Commission with respect to the amendment, proposed amendment to the agreement. So, that's what the agreement states right now, and the proposed amendment would allow the development of the elderly housing units and the rest of the project, which I think also involves some retail space, to proceed by assuring that 16 spaces will be available solely for the residents of the housing units.
Yep. Joe, anything you'd like to add?
No.
Okay. All right, very good. So, I know we've discussed this before. We're all on board with this project. Elderly housing is very important. We're trying to bring more to town. We've got a couple of projects I'm working on that in the next two years, we're gonna see more 55 and over communities, so I think this ties in perfectly to the strategy here with the town of North Haven. So, any other discussion, Sally or Bill?
Yes, I certainly agree that it is a very appropriate and needed type of development. The last time we discussed it, I was just wondering, it's, basically, you're protecting 16 spaces from being used if people are there using the athletic fields or the retail space. So, these are put aside, guaranteed, for the residents.
Correct.
But, the question I had, I believe, when we last discussed it, is 16 guaranteed spaces enough for 16 units? Because people do have guests sometimes. This is an elderly unit, they might have a healthcare worker, a home aid worker that has their own. Do you feel 16 is enough for 16 units?
Good evening, Joe Porto, represent the developers of this project. So, I do recall that, and the answer is, we are going to be in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission in early September. We will go through the application process with them, and if the Commission feels that additional reserved spaces are necessary for guests, then we will amend the site plan to show that. There is sufficient parking with, for the project, with the combined parking for, that exists at Maiden Lane, plus the additional spaces that are on the town property. So, there's always gonna be sufficient parking, so if the Commission feels that calling out some additional reserved parking is appropriate, the applicant would certainly be in favor of that. And then, the site plan would come back to your board to reflect that.
Great.
And the easement can then presumably be changed to reflect that as well.
Yes, I went to the site, and there is a lot of other parking, I agree, but there could also be a large event there at the athletic fields, that, you know, so it's just, that is, I'm glad to hear that that is something that will be considered, and your client will comply if the Planning and Zoning Commission, which I have great confidence in, deems fit. So...
Yes.
That is fine. The only other issue that I had last time was concern about the maintenance and insurance provisions in the original agreement, which I think were provisions H and J, and I'm satisfied with the provision in the amendment, paragraph four, that deals with that. And so, there will be no changes in those obligations and duties, so I was happy to see that. So, I'm fine with this. Again, I agree with you, Mr. Frieda, that this is needed housing, and I'm satisfied with the answer that I got and the wording in the provision. Thank you.
All right.
And we're not creating any new parking, we're just reserving existing parking.
That is correct.
Because, you know, and I wasn't completely sure about that, just from reading it, reading through it, because there is a parcel that looks like that's not being devoted to parking right now. Could that be used for parking if needed? You know, at the very end of the property, if I look at the map. You know, there's a portion that is, it looks like it's 17,633 square feet.
If, so, I don't believe that's on the Maiden Lane property, so if that was part of the town property, yeah, I would think so, subject to, you know, to your approval. But, there's 90 spaces, by my count, between what is on the town's town property and what's on the Maiden Lane property. So, that's, that's a, that's a fair amount of parking, in well in excess of what the regs require for our project. And then, of course, you know, the people that come to Memorial Field will be, it's evening, it's Saturdays and Sundays, so, you know, that would be outside of regular business hours, so there won't be the competing crush between residents wanting to watch kids play and people wanting to shopper access professional offices that would be there, so, we're not anticipating a problem.
See, I couldn't come up with, I don't think I counted exactly correctly, so there is 90 parking spaces already.
That is correct, and that's what the site plan shows, that we're gonna put in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission next month.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Very good. All right, continue.
Yes, so, given that discussion, item nine, I will move the following resolution that the Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes First Selectman Michael J. Frieda to execute an amendment to agreement, including easements, recorded in Volume 500, page 319, of the North Haven Land Records on behalf of the town, in the event that the Planning and Zoning Commission approves applications submitted by or on behalf of Maiden Lane Properties LLC for the development of 16 elderly housing units at 23 Maiden Lane to provide parking for said units, authorizes and authorizes Town Council to amend the draft of said amendment presented to the Board of Selectmen to include all required revisions following commission approval. So, I will move that as read.
All right, motion. Is there a second?
Oh, a second?
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Passes. Thank you, Joe. Jeffrey, so... All right, so now, we're gonna move to item number 10. As we said in the beginning of this meeting, I'm gonna give everyone, I'd like to give everyone a brief summary of three of the ordinances that we have been discussing to put together. The first one is speed cameras. This is now unfolding all over the state of Connecticut. There are people in every city and town that, quite frankly, are disgusted with the level of speeding in every municipality throughout the state. There are accidents on I-91, people going 90 to 100 miles an hour. There's drag racing on the interstates, 95, Merritt Parkway, 91. Here in North Haven, our speed, if our average speed on a street is 25 to 30 miles an hour, people are speeding 50, 55, 60 miles an hour. Route 5 has become a racetrack. So, with this legislation that's been passed at the state level, it allows the municipalities to install cameras at various locations throughout any city and town. Right now, in one municipality, there have been over 1,000 tickets in one month that have been registered. The controversial part of this is there are fines as a result of the tickets. The impetus about this concept has been, we have to control speeding, and we are unable to effectively control it. If you think about North Haven with 22 square miles of geography, 194 miles worth of roadways, no difference, North Haven is no different than anyone else with the amount of speeding. So, that ordinance, which you'll see at the September 4th meeting, will be a delineation of how the ordinance will be presented to the general public, because as you all know, in this form of government, it's the public that will vote on whether or not that we should go with speed cameras. That's item number one. Item number two is the street takeovers. So, I've been all over the news since last fall on this issue, and I've been on the news because I'm part of a regional task force with all the other mayors and first selectmen in the area to try to control our streets from not being taken over. I, myself, two years ago, was in a street takeover, where there were 400 cars and ATVs that crippled the traffic in North Haven, and I was right in the middle of it. Wasn't too happy about it, because what I saw were residents who were terrified in their own cars as they were being cut off, stopped, pointed at, and it was a very bad thing to see. So, what this is about, and this is, everybody's on board with this, at my level, Republicans, Democrats, it's a bipartisan issue. We've got to stop street takeovers. Even as we sit here tonight, we have intel that there's gonna be another street takeover here in North Haven. So, what are we doing about all this? We are using our resources, our police department, FBI, state police, we're collecting intel to try to stop any street takeovers and preempt them. About five or six months ago, actually, it was probably about nine months ago, we stopped a major street takeover on Route 5 because of the intel that we've been receiving. However, in December, on Universal Drive, there was a street takeover. I happened to be in Milford that night at an event, I'm on my way back, and Channel Eight's calling me, and they were very concerned because what they saw was a street takeover. So, at Universal Drive, it was so bad that people got hurt, but the people that got hurt were those that were part of the street takeover, because they were celebrating. As traffic was tied up, as there were circles and circles, coincidentally, there was another street takeover on Universal Drive where a 911 vehicle could not get in. There was somebody that needed an ambulance, and the street had been taken over. So, I'm gonna tell you what I've said publicly, because it's all, it's all, it's on video. I said at all these press conferences, "We are fed up, we're disgusted, and we're not gonna take it anymore. We're gonna take our streets back." So, I mentioned in this press conference that, we're gonna, just like this, I'm using this a demonstrative type of approach. Here's what I said, "We're gonna arrest everybody. We're gonna find them, and we're gonna arrest them, because they can run, but they can't hide." Well, I had some friends of mine who said, "Hey, Mike, you're kinda talking kinda tough here, right?" To which my response was, "What would you like me to do?" "Oh, we can't do anything. Our hands are tied. There's nothing we can do." Well, there is something we can do. And after that, three months later, seven people got arrested in that Universal Drive street takeover. So, this ordinance is designed, gonna be very complex and complicated, to review it here, to take it to the public, and have the public vote on it. And the way it will work is this, first offense, I think it's $1,500. Second offense, fine $2,500. Third offense, or maybe the second offense, we're still working this out, as part of the second offense, is to confiscate the vehicles. And at this press conference, and there was Attorney William Tong there, there were mayors from all over, there were state senators, so they asked me to speak, and we were in New Haven. We were at a building, a Butler Building, and the Butler Building had ATVs that were assembled in the building, that they had been confiscated. So, I said, "Mr. Frieda, what's your opinion on this?" I looked into camera and I said, "You see where we are right now, ladies and gentlemen? You see these ATVs in the back of us? We're not only gonna confiscate them, but we're going to crush them when we get them." And that's what, that's what our plan is. And that is what we have to do to send the message. Think about this, you and your loved ones are in traffic, right? All of a sudden, you're trying to get on, like I was that day, on Route 22, off of Exit 11. All of a sudden, intercepted, cars intercepted, cars screeching to a halt, people were terrified, young children in the cars. We can't have that in our communities. So, that's the second thing, the second ordinance that's being, gonna be proposed. The third ordinance that's being proposed is something that I came up with, I say "I came up with," I came up with a group of people that wanted to try to bring this forward. Think about this, we've had staff here that was involved with this. When a bus stop happens, and children are getting out of a bus, and the stop sign goes down, there are people running those stop signs, putting children in harm's way. There was an incident here in North Haven where somebody tried to stop someone who was going through the red, the stop sign, and it became a road rage situation. They chased the individual for saying, "Just calm down, slow down." So, think about the public safety aspect of this, ladies and gentlemen, whether it's street takeovers, whether it's ATVs or speeding cameras putting, put up that were designed to sort of mitigate speeding, and this bus issue. That's why we bring, we're bringing these three ordinances over to this board in September. Now, I'm interested to hear your opinion on this, because, in public comment, hopefully, maybe you'll say, you can maybe offer some insight, but we've got to do something, and that is what we're trying to do. So, that's a summary of those three ordinance that are gonna be brought forward. All right, any questions?
Well, I have a comment. I support these efforts. I recently got a resident called me from Ridge Road on the north side of Dixville Avenue, complaining about speeding on Ridge Road. So, certainly, the first one, I am supportive of. And as far as the street takeovers, the sooner the better. I know we've had, you referenced some street takeovers months ago, but very recently, the... recently, the, um, past couple of Saturday nights, in, in July, there were huge crowds on State Street near Skiff Street-
Hartford.
-in the area of the, um, the Ridge Hill Hospital.
Right.
Um, and-
It came down from Wallenford on Hartford Turnpike down to State Street.
So you, you're aware of those?
I'm aware of everything, yes.
Yeah, I, I did not see any police, no, I don't know, I shouldn't say see, I don't know of any police presence that those, I think it was either two weeks in a row, or it happened one week, and then there was a, a pause, and then the following weeks.
Right.
But it was like two out of three weeks in July.
Right.
Um, a, a, a very large number-
Yes.
-that was very frightening to a lot of people. So I'm sure you, you also heard about this.
Oh, yeah. Elm Street, Elm Street was another example, Elm Street. So let me explain, 'cause you mentioned police presence, okay?
Uh, no, this was State Street.
Yeah, but I know, but Elm Street was, was another situation.
Okay.
So, so sometimes we'll get a call and they'll say, "Well, we saw the police there following them." There's a reason for it, folks. If we have four police officers that are following those who are, um, doing the street takeover, they're outnumbered, two-hundred, three-hundred to four. So rather than stop them in front of residential areas like on Elm Street there about three weeks ago, the police job is to get them out as quickly as they can. By following them, they can't stop, they can't congregate, and they're looking to get out, because our police are following them out. So the, the intention is, oh, you can't stop it right now, 'cause you're outnumbered. Get them out as quickly as possible. And that's what our police are trying to do. But the, the residual effect is, is this disruption, like we see in all our, our streets. Hartford Turnpike, talking about State Street, Elm Street, residential sections, it's, uh, it's become a game. It's become a sport, so to speak. We, as municipal leaders, we have an obligation, a fundamental obligation, to protect our citizens. Because without public safety, it would be, it would be a rampant situation. So public safety is at the forefront of this administration, the town of North Haven, and that's why we're trying to bring these forward. In the end, if the public doesn't like it, the public will vote on it. We hope the public supports it. Because without these, um, it's gonna be difficult to control this.
All right, well, just-
Well, I can't imagine the public not liking this. Because speeding is so rampant. One of the, one of the problems I, that I see is, um, I live on Basset Road, and, um, I, it's GPS. GPS takes people off of Washington Avenue, and they cut through, um, my neighborhood continually. And, um, you know, instead of, you know, the posted speed limit is twenty-five or thirty. People are doing forty-five, fifty, fifty-five, just because they, you know, roads are, we have nice roads, they're fairly wide, um, but, you know, there, there, there are people, you know, riding bike, uh, children riding bicycles there, people trying to cross the street, and, um, I, I think they get directed there. And I, you know, like at the corner up by my house, and I can see, um, you know, I counted twenty cars one day, and nineteen of the cars went toward North Branford at the corner of twenty-two. And, um, they all, they were all worked up through, nineteen out of twenty. Um, so, you know, and, you know, I, I, I think it's, I think it's exactly what we need throughout a lot of areas in town. I can't say anybody would want to make their neighborhoods safer for, you know, people to walk their dog, you know, have their children ride bicycles with them, or just, you know, I, I walk frequently in my neighborhood, and, um, you know, I, I've gotten used to, you know, knowing exactly where I can safely cross and have a field of view without getting run over. Um, and I think it's just, uh, I think it's a great idea. The one place I believe, Mike, that we cannot put a camera is on a, uh, state highway, on twenty-two, even though I think twenty-two needs it as well.
Yeah, also, the DOT has to come into play here, because if, uh, you look at some of those municipalities now that wanna move forward with this, the DOT has to approve the specific locations. That's the Department of Transportation. So, um, but our goal is to bring the ordinance forward, to have the public review it, like in a meeting like this, like Mary was talking about earlier, and then, uh, have open discussion at the, uh, public meeting. That's kinda where we're at. Sally?
Yes, I, I just wanted to complete my comment. I was on number two. And my only purpose of bringing up, uh, the State Street was, in your original presentation, you were talking about events that happened last December and last fall. And I'm just trying to impress upon the folks that these kinds of events are happening very recently, in fact, within the past few weeks. So that was my, my purpose of bringing up, uh, the recent issues at, uh, State Street near, near, um, Skiff, uh, hopefully to, um, uh, provoke people to, to support this, because I support this. And as for the third one, um, people who, I, I can't think of any lower violation of traffic rules than, um, speeding past a, uh, one of those stop signs with the red flashing lights on a school bus. Um, uh, so certainly I support this. I, I could give a little historical, um, basis for my deep interest in this. Um, in nineteen seventy-two, here in North Haven, on Blakesley Avenue, uh, there was a fatality involving a school bus.
Yes.
Um, and that was before the arm, uh, came out in front of the bus, uh, that we see. Whenever the door opens, there's this arm that swings forward. And that arm actually came about because of this accident in North Haven. A young, um, elementary school-aged child crossed in front of the bus to go home, and one of her papers blew away back toward the bus, and she ran back, and, and the bus hit her, and she was tragically killed, and it racked the town for, for many months. And, um, thanks to some efforts of some, uh, uh, members of the Board of Education, and I will specifically mention the late, um, um, Faith, uh, Fay Clark, she had a lot to do with this, um, having the installation of that arm that swings out. So for an old-time North Havener like myself, this rings ve- very deeply, because I remember that time so well. I was a high school student. Uh, and so, um, anyone who, that was a different issue, you, you know, that was just purely an accident. But, uh, that started, that accident, um, promoted a lot of the safety measures that we still have today. And so anyone who violates that stop sign that comes out from the bus and the red flashing lights, uh, you can't, um, in my opinion, give a fine, uh, high enough.
Agreed.
So I am in support of three, and thank you for allowing me to give a little bit of that historical. I'm sure you might be aware of that, that story from way back.
And sadly, in nineteen seventy-six, on Chapel Hill, there was a similar type of tragedy.
Right. So, um, let's, uh, you know, but we're approaching this the right way, we're talking about it tonight, we'll hear from the folks, we'll have the formal ordinance next month, and, um, I'm sure that, uh, we'll go through it, and, uh, but, um, at first blush, I'm very supportive of each of these three endeavors. Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna propose a motion to table the items up to fifteen.
Ten through fifteen?
Ten through fifteen.
Okay.
And then I'd like to talk about sixteen, 'cause we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna table that too, okay? So, so let's, let's start with-
So sixteen and seventeen, 'cause sixteen and seventeen go together.
Yes, okay.
And that would be eighteen, because eighteen is the resolution to call all of those.
Right. All right, so we'll, we'll, I'll, let me finish with, uh, sixteen, and then we can table everything, okay?
All right.
So, we have, uh, in North Haven, ladies and gentlemen, um, I spent a lot of time down through the years, um, most recently even with, um, Valley Service Road. Several years ago, after we brought Amazon in, um, we ended up connecting Amazon with Valley Service Road. Took a lot of time, a lot of effort. We did it to take about twenty-five to thirty percent of the traffic, car traffic, off of Route five, from Amazon. That's been very, that's been very successful. Uh, as a result of that, unfortunately, or a byproduct of that, um, there's illegal dumping all over Valley Service Road. There's truck, uh, tires, car tires, there's construction material. Uh, we've spent thousands and thousands of dollars of public works time trying to clean everything up. They did it mostly at night. So what did we do? I made arrangements to work with the UI, bring some developers in to collaborate, and we put streetlights all over Valley Service Road. So if you drive there at night now, the, the lights will be on. That is designed to try to minimize the illegal dumping, but also maximize the safety, because you're speeding, people speeding there at night, and you can't see anybody, that's another real problem. So we finally completed that. As a result of all of that, we have to name the road that we built collaborating with Amazon that has connected Amazon to Valley Service Road. We've come up with, uh, a ro, a road name, Amazon Drive. Secondly, years ago, uh, we, I was involved with another major project over on Defco Park Road to connect Defco Park Road, the Defco Park pla, uh, Plaza, not Plaza there, but Industrial Park, into the south side of Amazon. And that was designed to take some traffic out of the south side to go northbound on, to get on, uh, Exit thirteen to go north. So what we've done here and tried to do was reduce the number of traffic on Route five by having alternate locations. So we have to name this road. And we've come up with the name Defco Road Extension. Now, lastly, and more poignantly, um, Coach Bob DeMayo's a legend here in North Haven. So Betty DeMayo and I, and the sports community, we've worked very closely together down through the years, including when Bob was alive. We've had meetings in here, and, um, we ended up doing a lot to improve some of the sports fields here. So I talked to Bob quite a few times before he passed away, and it came up that, um, there's a road there. There's a road there, it's called School Road, that comes off of Sackett Point Road and goes into the first base side of DeMayo Field, which is the high school, uh, baseball team field, and then right next to it is the high school softball team field. So I'm bringing this forward, uh, I'll be talking to the sports groups, and we'd like to bring this forward and name that road Bob DeMayo Way, which would be a true tribute to Bob DeMayo. And it'll be a true tribute, I know Betty would appreciate it, the DeMayo family would appreciate it, I know the sports group is gonna be a hundred percent behind it, and it's a symbolic representation of all of the years that he was the coach here in North Haven. So these three roads, just to summarize, I talked to you about, uh, the Valley Service Road situation, what we're doing there to curb dumping, to increase safety by putting streetlights in there, and we'd like to name that Amazon Drive. Secondly, again, just to summarize, Defco Park Extension. That was built to try to take traffic out of Amazon, onto Defco Park Road, to get on Route five and go north. And lastly, again, I talked to you about the tribute that we'd like to do for Coach Bob DeMayo. But we have to table this.
Yeah. I, I just have a question about-
Technically, don't have to table it, you could approve it tonight, and then when we do call for the town meeting, we can add it on the, onto that call, is that correct?
We could do that, too.
Okay.
Jeff, you can do that.
Yeah, so if you wanna just get that part of the business done, you can.
Yep.
I, I just have a question about School Road. I, um, there's several roads, um, from, uh, Sackett Point that, that feed into-
Right.
-uh, the athletic fields, there's Anthony Road. It, it is, School, School Road, it's called, uh, School Road Drive or School Road? Is, is, is that a residential street with-
It's supposed to say School Road, there's like, when you get to the end of School Road, it, there's like a driveway, so that-
Okay.
It's the, it's not the actual naming of the whole road, it's like that access point from School Road. So it, the way it's written, it's driveway, it's not School Road driveway.
So that was my question, School Road, which is a residential street, is not changing?
Correct.
Okay.
It's the portion.
That's the portion leading, there, there's parking there, and there's a drive, okay.
Yes.
So I got it. I wasn't sure, because for example, Oakwood Drive-
Yeah.
-we have it named, uh, the Howard Loopy-
Howard Loopy, right.
You know, but it, it, that's a memorial name, it's still known as Oakwood Drive.
Yes.
So I wasn't sure if you were calling School Road like that, Bob DeMayo, uh, honorary thing, so this is a separate-
A separate.
'Cause you never wanna change the road name, because every, you know, the people living there-
That's exactly what it is.
So I wanted to make sure, uh, uh, but I, I am familiar with the way or driveway that there is after the road.
Yes.
So the folks living on School Road don't have to panic-
Correct.
-that their road is changing, and that they have to change their address and all that. So I wasn't sure if it was gonna be like a Howard Loopy thing.
It's, it's the same, same analogy, yes.
Yeah, well, um, all of Oakwood Drive is called Howard Loopy Memorial. So, uh, this is just naming a specific area at the end of School Road that feeds into, like you said, near first base, how appropriate. Um, um, although he coached third.
He coached third base, right.
Uh, that's okay, he would like, um, uh, uh, I, I, I can see it in my mind, it's the road, it's the way that enters toward that parking lot by first base. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I think it's unnamed now, really.
Right.
Yeah.
I got it.
It's just like a driveway.
I just didn't want, uh, the folks on School Road to be concerned. So I fully support this, yes.
Let me also, um, finalize this with the summarization I've given here on all these issues that, tonight, is that currently, there's no road name for Defco Park Extension, and currently, uh, no road for Amazon Drive. It's nameless right now. That's why we came up with these names, okay? So, all right, so, so what is your pleasure? Do you want to vote on this, or you wanna just, you wanna just put it all together at the next meeting?
It's up to the board.
Well, if they're all gonna be dealt with at the same meeting, whether it's a special town meeting, or we incorporate it into our annual town meeting that we have near the end of September, it's still gonna be all together.
Yes.
So I think we should table them all, all, all together, just to keep it-
Whatever the board would like to do.
Keep it one happy family, but it's up to you guys.
Yep.
Because I think for the, uh, traffic ones that, you know, that we've, you know, just, um, you know, table for the moment, hopefully we'll be able to, uh, vote on those at the, our next meeting is September fourth. So, and then we could put them to either another town, a special town meeting or the annual town meeting.
Right, but the issue is whether to do these road things now.
It would just be one less thing to discuss on the next agenda, 'cause it would just be incorporated into the, the call of the meeting, and not in the body of the agenda.
Not in the body.
So you wouldn't have to talk about it, you would only read it when you read the call.
And we don't, we don't need to discuss it for the call, as, it's already a settled item, we don't need-
No, because tonight you'd be resolving to recommend it to the town meeting.
The, the roadway, all right, so-
And when you vote on the call, you're just actually sending it. So it's two separate things, and it's fine to do it separately.
Just figured it's just-
Okay.
We probably just need to amend number eighteen to indicate that, um-
Yes.
It'll be a, uh-
So we'll just-
A call for a special town me, uh, for it to be, um, voted on at the next special town meeting to be called.
Right, so we'll just do, we could do sixteen and seventeen, is what we're doing now.
Yes.
Correct.
So, uh-
We need to vote to table through fifteen, ten through fifteen, we need to vote on that, I think.
But then we have to table eighteen also, 'cause we're not, we're not calling any meeting tonight.
No.
So why don't we do sixteen and seventeen, and then we could amend to skip-
Correct.
-ten through fifteen and eighteen.
Correct.
All right, so-
You got it.
All right, so you'd like to make a amendment?
Well, I have to read sixteen, then make the motion in seventeen. So sixteen is to consider and act upon a resolution recommending to town meeting the naming of the following roads previously adopted by the town meeting as town roads. Okay. A, naming of Amazon Front Access Drive, Amazon Drive, naming of Amazon Rear Access Road to Defco Park Road Extension. C, naming of School Road Driveway to Bob DeMayo Way. So item seventeen, we've already considered it, I will move to seventeen, is that okay?
Yes.
You sure? Okay.
You're good.
So I'll, item seventeen, I'll make a motion, resolve that the board of selectmen recommend to the town meeting the naming of the following roads previously adopted by the town meeting as town roads. A, naming of Amazon Front Access Drive, Amazon Drive. B, naming of Amazon Rear Access Road to Defco Park Road Extension. C, naming of School Road Driveway to Bob DeMayo Way. I'll make that motion as read.
I'll second, uh, Sally's resolution.
Okay, so you have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Sally, your bill?
Well, I'll make a motion to table on our agenda items ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and eighteen.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second that resolution by Sally.
It's a motion.
All right.
Or motion, rather, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a motion, and there's a second, is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, item 19.
Number 19, I'll make a motion for the reappointment of Kenneth Quick, 5 Hamilton Court, to the Cable TV Advisory Council for a two-year term to expire June 30th, 2027.
I'll second Kenneth's reappointment.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ken, I'd like to thank you very much for stepping forward on this. It is kind of an important council, although they meet like four times a year, but it really helps us with North Haven TV and some of the public access channels in this region, so, thank you very much, Ken, and we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll motion for the reappointment of Peter S. Sandor, 10 Deer Run Lane, to the Quinnipiac Valley Health District Board of Directors for a three-year term to expire June 30th, 2028.
Second?
All right, we have a motion and a second, end the discussion, I'd just like to thank you, Peter, you've been with us, and you have been a remarkable asset to us on this commission, because you have a great deal of expertise, so we appreciate you, you continuing, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Item 21, I'll make a motion for the appointment of Riley Cargan, 65 Oakwood Drive, to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate to fill the vacancy of Luigi Lou Coppola Senior, term to expire November 30th, 2025.
I'll second Riley's appointment.
Okay, so, it's a good example, ladies and gentlemen, I happen to know Riley very well, and this is a good example of somebody who had not sat on any boards and commissions, and we're trying to get new people to come in, and Riley is, has agreed to do this. As far as Lou's concerned, we thank him for what he's done, but he's got a lot of boards and commissions right now, and there'll probably be another one very soon, so, he's done a great job for us also, and also heads up our cert team that you see at the concerts and various locations in town. So, thank you very much, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next item, bond release.
The, we only have one bond release for this meeting. I'll motion for the release of this bond for P-21-21, Panera Bread 600 Universal Drive, amount of original bond, $12,500, current balance of bond, $12,500. The motion is for the release of the entire bond balance of $12,500, with the recommendation of Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second that motion for that release.
All right, motion and second, any other discussions?
Well, I, I read the report from Planning and Zoning, there were a few very minor outstanding items to be done per the site plan, but I have full confidence the Planning and Zoning Commission gave its approval, so they must have made arrangements for those, so I'm fully supportive of this.
Okay, thank you. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 23, we'd like to take that.
I'll make a motion to approve the property tax refunds reflected in our agenda.
I will second those refunds.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. So, ladies and gentlemen, we're at the item number 24, so the next regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen is Thursday, September 4th, here at North Haven's Memorial Town Hall. And now we're at the point for public comment. Tom White.
Tom White, Summer Lane, good evening. I would like to discuss a public health and safety hazard relative to outdoor electric vehicle charging stations. At July's Planning and Zoning meeting, there was another site application for an outdoor electric vehicle charging station, this one in front of Ray Moore and Flanagan. No public comment is permitted for site plan applications, nor is public comment permitted during deliberations. This outdoor electric vehicle charging station is high-powered, unlike the others. I have a concern regarding the life cycle, particularly of the charging cords which are encased in rubber. Think about the rubber tires on your car, and what would happen if you never replaced them, and just waited until they cracked from dry rot, causing a blowout. That would not be safe. I discovered through some research, there is only a required inspection of the charging cords at installation. There are no government regulations, state or federal or OSHA, relative to subsequent inspections and/or replacement. These outdoor electric vehicle charging stations do not have canopies. Outdoor EV charging stations are a relatively new and growing concept, and therefore, safety measures have been overlooked, creating a public health and safety hazard. Here is a real-life example of the public health and safety hazard to which I am speaking. Yale New Haven Hospital leases two surface lots for parking from the city of New Haven. At both lots, there are outdoor electric vehicle charging stations. As senior patrol officers for Yale Hospital, one of our many assignments throughout the campus is patrolling these lots. Last spring, a fellow senior patrol officer told me, while patrolling one of the lots during misty weather, he discovered an electric vehicle charging cord lying on the ground that had not retracted. Not believing there was any danger, and intending to replace the cord to its receptacle, the officer picked up the EV charging cord and received an electric shock. Fortunately, he was not seriously injured. It is believed the officer's work boots, with their thick rubber soles, were the reason why the officer was not seriously injured. I brought the awareness of this public health and safety hazard to the Planning and Zoning Commission earlier this week via a submitted letter. I was told this is not their purview, it is the building department's purview. I have spoken with Laura Magarasi, Land Use Administrator, who spoke with Jim Cook from Building. It was stated, any regular, any required regular inspections and replacement of the electric vehicle charging cords need to be added as a new addendum to the state building code, which is what they go by. It is unknown when that will happen. In the meantime, it is up to local municipalities to create their own regulations requiring mandatory regular inspections and replacement of the electric vehicle charging cords, and even their handles, taking into consideration the wear and tear on the cords encased rubber due to our extreme New England weather, heat waves, torrential rains, gale-force winds, hurricanes, tornadoes, nor'easters, and blizzards. It is unknown if any town employee will create these regulations. In the course of my research, what I did find relative to outdoor electric vehicle charging cords, maintenance, inspections, and replacement were recommendations and best practices. I have copies for, of an AI overview search of regulations and standards concerning the lifespan, safety, and replacement of outdoor EV charging station cords, where there are manufacturer recommendations and best practices of regular inspections, weekly or monthly, cable storage, and replacement indicators. I also have copies for the board of any, of an article from BHS, which includes the statement, "New," and quote, "New OSHA regulations on EVSE cable management haven't been announced, let alone published," end quote. To conclude, let this be a public safety announcement, spread the word, before charging an electric vehicle, look at the cord and handle to be sure both are in good condition. If they are not, do not use them. If there is a charging cord on the ground at an outdoor electric vehicle charging station, do not touch it, this will prevent serious injury and death.
Mary has copies of the- Okay, thank you very much, Tom. You're welcome. Mary, you have the copies here, okay?
Thank you, Mary.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you again, Tom. I'll take a look at this, maybe. We'll, we'll go through this another time. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, anybody? Come. Any other comments? Oh, yes, sir, you raise your hand, yes.
Good evening, everybody, James Mason, Ridge Road. I just want to bring to the board's attention, which obviously it is already on your, your scope, with respect to the speed of traffic on Ridge Road, specifically between Dixwell Avenue and Davis Road, Route 22.
Right.
And Mike, I've mentioned it to you before, Sally also, as well, but I do want this opportunity just to bring it to the board's attention overall. There are, there are two bridges along that stretch of road. The first bridge coming from the north is Route 40, and the nature of the bridge is such that it's inclined, it goes down towards the rest of Ridge Road. That combined with the curvature of the bridge allows cars to whip off of that turn and head on down Ridge Road. That stretch of Ridge Road between Davis and Dixwell is about .6 miles. It's a perfect straightaway, with an incline from the north, and then from off of Davis, and then an incline off of Dixwell, because there's another bridge on the opposite side crossing over the Merritt. So, both of those bridges lend themselves to an incline that just increases the speed of traffic, and, and I am not exaggerating that the average speed of traffic on that stretch of Ridge Road is about 60 miles an hour. In addition to that, the frequency of truck traffic with respect to box trucks and tractor-trailers have increased substantially since I've been there, about 13 years, significantly. I can't understand, you know, and I haven't followed the trucks, but it's, it's not conducive to the nature of the road. There is not one commercial property on that stretch of road. Yet, you see all these trucks coming through. I reached out to Officer DePascal, he mentioned, and I, I brought to his attention the through-truck signs, and he enlightened me to the fact that, despite what I thought, I thought basically a through-truck sign prohibited trucks from just simply traveling through that portion of road. But, he brought to, he explained that if there's any activity that that truck has in North Haven, if the business is located in North Haven, if they have a stop in North Haven, they are allowed to just simply travel through that stretch of road, which makes, makes no sense to me as to what the purpose of the sign would be after that, given that definition. So, I was very happy to hear about the, I guess there's going to be a vote on the ordinance as to whether or not we adopt it, and what have you.
Yes.
I would be very interested to know when that vote is-
Absolutely, James, yeah.
And definitely will be voting. I'm an absolute proponent of the traffic devices. I think Ridge Road is a perfect and absolute necessary location for one of those types of devices. It is extraordinarily dangerous, I lost a dog on that road, it was destroyed when I first, shortly after I bought the house. And you mentioned the road takeovers, the ATVs, on, I don't know how many times, we've seen about 50 ATVs, dirt bikes, motorcycles, just run right up and down that road. Again, it is a perfect straightaway, and it lends itself to speed. I have to admit that before I moved to Ridge Road, I probably was traveling well over the 35 mile an hour speed zone, speed limit myself. It's just the nature of the road, given the straightaway and the incline. So, it is an absolute, absolute perfect location for a speed device. I was told that, I talked to Officer DePascal, he mentioned there was a SCROGS study on the Valley Service Road, and that perhaps whatever remedies they were, they identified for that road could be potentially implemented other places in North Haven. I, I'm hopeful, but, you know, I, I like the idea of the, of the traffic devices, I think that's an absolute good idea. The other thing is to perhaps reduce the width of the road, and put designated bike lanes. Quinnipiac uses that stretch of road for their bicyclists, or bike club, or what have you, and there are, they travel that route every day, all the time, so there's a tremendous amount of bike traffic, and crazy enough to say, and I, I only, I love my neighbors, but I, I think they're crazy, to walk along Ridge Road, but there are a lot of people that walk along that stretch of road as well, as dangerous as it is. So, a designated area for bikes, walking, and that kind of thing would serve dual purpose in the sense of reducing the speed of traffic, hopefully, and then also providing for bicyclists, safe, safe, safe travel for bicyclists and pedestrians. So, I do, I do, I am interested in knowing exactly when that vote will, will occur. But, thank you, Sally, for bringing it to the board's attention, and Mike, always, thank you, I know I've, I've mentioned this to you before.
James, he's been great to work with down through the years, and we try to help James, I know exactly where he lives, and there were times when we put the radar there, we put the speed sign there, and what we see is, it, it's only a temporary fix. So, the, when you see, and James knows this, because he's with the state, so, are you retired, by the way, now?
Yes, I retired.
I thought you did, right, yeah.
Yeah, last, last April.
Yeah, so, we've had a lot of discussions, so, for those that don't know, when you have a speed sign there that flashes, let's say it's, people are going 35 miles an hour in the 30 zone, people think it's, all it does is stops, slows people down, that's part of it, but it's a computer, it compiles data that gets downloaded into the police department database, and it, it calculates the number of cars per hour, in this case, on Ridge Road, the speeding per hour, and it helps the police determine when is the most heavily traffic and highest speed areas, and, and times, and then the police department will put radar there and ticket people. But it's only a temporary fix, what we've seen, and James, we've talked about this, it-
Oh, yeah.
They come back, and they're speeding again.
Well, more, and, and even interesting, even more interesting, they drive past that, seeing the speed that they're traveling, and just continue to travel that speed. So, as much as it's an acknowledgement of the speed that they're going, it doesn't, it doesn't stop them.
No, it doesn't.
Because, again, you've got that incline, so it's just naturally going to speed up the cars anyway, and they just simply are used to traveling that speed. A lot of them use that as a fast way to get between the two, between Dixwell and, and Route 22, okay? And I, I have to say that a lot of the people that are traveling the fastest are turning off the streets right up between those, between Davis and, and Dixwell. So, they are, they're some of the worst, because I, sometimes I watch them, and then they're making a left or a right off of the, off of Ridge Road, so, it, it, you know, as much as I, you know, kind of shake my fist at them, I understand, and I, I can, I realize that it's not necessarily them intentionally traveling that fast or what have you, it's just the nature of the road, and that is an absolute reason why it's a perfect, it's an absolutely perfect location.
James, you remember well, because it wasn't too far from where you live, when there was a tragedy there, our friend-
Yes, right, just on the opposite side of Dixwell.
Right.
Correct, correct, correct. And I just want to say before, I was, I had a meeting when I was working with DOT, I sat down with a potential buyer for the Amazon location, and he wanted the DOT to build him a connector road, the same road that you're proposing a new name for, and the nature of the, of the, of the business was going to be such that they had top-secret types of development going on, and they could not have any public, anybody, you know, from the public traveling up and down that road. So, clearly, and I'm sitting there, and I'm like, so you're trying to suggest to me that we're supposed to build you a road that's specifically just for the employees with state money and federal funds? That's not going to happen, and it was, it was so surprising, the guy came from New York, and it was like, he was like, what are you talking about? I'm like, what are you talking about? Clearly, this, you can't do that. So, he moved away from the- So he moved away from the, from the purchase, but you know, and then Amazon came through. But it's just interesting that you brought that up.
James, coming back to the meeting, I would suggest you consider coming September 4th back here. Then you'll hear the ordinances. They'll all be sort of illustrated in terms of the content of those ordinances. And at that point in time, we'll make the decision as to when we're going to vote on that, so you'll know, okay?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Probably will be the 29th.
Probably be the 29th, you think?
Right, because the 22nd is the WPCA meeting that night and people may want to attend that meeting.
I'll be going to there.
Right.
I assume you'll be going to there.
So most likely it'll be Monday, the 29th. That's not confirmed, but tentative.
September 29th.
That's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
Good to see you, James.
Yes, good to see you. And I'm glad to see you're in better health than Mike.
James, you were saying the same thing I was saying on my road.
Yes, it's crazy. It, it, it just, it just, it's just.
And the trucks use them as cut-throughs.
Yeah, yeah.
I've seen tractor-trailers.
Tractor-trailers. And I, you know, after the, it was actually my girlfriend's dog, but I dug the road Pet Cemetery Highway because I swear, if you recall the movie, there was nothing but tractor-trailer trucks driving up and down in front of that, in front of the property where the, where the child that passed, you know, died in the movie. And it's just, it just reminded me of the same thing and it's just insane. It really is. And it's gotten, it's gotten significantly worse over the years, so, but thank you.
Thank you for coming, James.
Ages ago, a couple of children died on Bassett, yeah.
On Bassett, is that right? Wow, yeah, yeah. There's an absolute, there's no doubt, there's an absolute need for these devices.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
David, I see your hand. David, then I know we'll come back over here. Did I see your hand up?
Me?
Yes.
Oh, no.
No, okay. So Bill, we'll come back. We see the hands up, trying to take them in order. So, so, yeah, we'll get, we'll get to the fans as I've seen them, the hands. So I didn't see Mary's hand right away until yours came up. So Mary, if you don't mind, let's get Bill up here, okay? And then we'll come back to you, then we'll go to Mr. and Mrs. Fowler. And I think, Susie, I saw your, I think I saw your hand too, Sue, so.
Bill Richards, North Avenue. We're talking about with the cameras, all right, coming up. Now, you said you, we got the like local street speed cameras that you put up to show what your speed is, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the local cameras, right, exactly.
Is there any way that that can be worked out, that it can record pictures of the vehicles and ticket?
No, not on that, not on those devices, no. So this is, this has to be a separate type of camera. This is just like a solar-based sign.
Right.
Calculates data. It doesn't have the ability to photograph anybody.
All right, are there such things out there?
No. Well, there are such things out there. That's kind of what we're doing with the ordinance.
Right, with the, like on poles.
I think he's talking about the speed cameras.
What, are you talking about the signs, the speed signs that show 35 miles an hour?
Yeah, say you're doing 40 and it's only 30.
No, no, that's what we're talking about.
Is there any way that that can?
No.
There's no way that it can happen?
No, that's why we're doing this though, Bill, okay? That's why we're doing this with the cameras, okay?
Right, because where you, on my street, you know where I am.
Right.
It's like a 60 mile an hour speedway on a quarter-mile street. So that's why I'm just wondering. Now, can the police also sit on private property driveways if they have, are authorized by their own homeowners anywhere in town?
Yes, but let me explain that to you. The answer is yes there. But because there's, let's say there's five or seven officers patrolling the town at all times, okay? They're not going to be able to spend a lot of time there. So in other words, you can't spend three hours there in one location. So they have to move around because if there's other calls for urgency or there's crimes, they have to respond to all that, so.
Yeah, I just think there's a certain point of the day where mostly the activity is, you know, the speeding.
Well, there's a lot of activity, that's the problem, which is what James and I have been talking about for years here.
Yes, I heard that.
It's all over, maybe on my street, on my street.
Yeah. Okay, the other thing is with the concerts on the green, we need to do something with the lighting on the stage or there was an issue this past Tuesday night. With sunset coming a lot earlier, we need to be able to get some lighting onto our stage over there.
Well, you know, you know, I'm there every Tuesday night.
I know.
And I usually, I'm one of the last ones out, dancing with the people in the green, you know, interacting with the public. But we had a lighting company go out there and they didn't think they needed more lights. So we'll take another look at it, Bill.
Yeah, well, they didn't come on, on the stage until a quarter after eight this week. And sun sets right now, tonight was eight o'clock. So, you know, the cost to have them turned on a little bit earlier with timer-wise, I don't think it'd be a problem.
Well, we'll take a look at that. We'll make a note of that, we'll talk to Andy and Mark Vergino, so.
And the other thing is the, Xfinity has been turning off your cable, working on it, going through the town. Now, when, is that, cuts your landline off also?
Yes.
Does the, does the police and fire departments know when they are cutting this off?
Yeah, they have to, they have to know, yes.
Okay. Another, I got a compliment for you guys. The letter that came out in the tax bill.
Yes.
For recycling was one of the best ones I've seen yet.
Yeah.
And the only thing is I've talked to a couple people, or three, four people, and said, did you see the letter in there, all right? Everybody's looking at the one page, how much am I going to pay, all right? Then you have the other page in there from the clerk's office. Then you had the letter in there. But just one thing, I would like to see them next year, when they do things like that, change the color from white and black to say like pink and black where it would capture your eye because there was a lot of vital information on that for the pickup, including no house dumpings into the street, house cleanouts, which was great. And we had numbers on there that you could call to get rid of the things that we don't pick up. But I think it was just a different color paper. It would stand out and reflect, catch your eye immediately.
I think you've talked to Valerie on this this week, I believe.
Yeah, I was talking.
Yes.
And you were on the phone when you, when I was talking.
So, well, we started this process by putting on refrigerators, the recycled magnets. So that was a big hit back then. We had it in green, I think there were different colors. So we'll take that under advisement. So I'm glad you liked the flyer, though, that we've.
Yeah, I think it was one of the best ones the town's put out in a long, long time, so.
Okay.
And if people do abuse by dumping out there, how are, how do we get to those people, the town notify them that we won't pick up like you got to get a dumpster? Because I had that problem on my street.
Yeah, we've been doing that all along, particularly during, as an example, if, bulk pickup's a good example, right?
Yeah.
Use that as an example. So we do it a few, a couple times a year. So we've seen down through the years that, let's say someone is moving, all of a sudden you see the whole yard, the front yard with, with whatever it is. We'll stop that.
Everything, everything.
Right. They'll, they'll get a call, they might get a ticket, they have to go to the transfer station and drop it off and get a truck to do that. So we've been doing that for years, yes.
All right. Oh, one other thing is we're talking about with the, with the ATVs and everything?
Yes.
I know it's not West Haven, it is arresting kids on bicycles in the street doing wheelies in massive groups, which is on news last night, so, you know, that could be something that we could look at for our town also.
Well, the police are actually looking at that. I don't think there's been a decision on that. They may have to go through the Traffic Commission, you know, the five elected officials who are on the police commission. But that's being viewed, reviewed right now, yes.
Okay, I was surprised to hear that last night on TV. It's a good idea.
But I think part of it too has to do with electric, you know, electric vehicles, electric bicycles that can go over a certain speed limit as well, which actually should be registered.
Well, you know, even still with the people on bicycles, because there was three, three young kids right over here, right in the corner of Linsley Street, when the concert was going on, they were coming right down through, so.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Regular bicycles, no electric.
Doing wheelies, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Bill, were you on the, were you on the same side, you and your husband, were on the concert the other night, up on the cement steps? Is that where you were yesterday?
Yeah, I was up there, yes.
Yeah, I got, I was on the other side of the green, so I got pulled over there, so I missed the, so I'm sorry, I missed the.
You did a good job on the dance floor a couple weeks ago, too.
Okay, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, I saw Mary's way, then we'll cover the Mr. Fowler and Mrs. Fowler. Susie, did you have a question, too? You're good, okay. Mary, go ahead.
Mary White Summer Lane. So Tom and I got stuck twice in a street takeover. So the first time was several years ago. It was during the summer. It was at night and it was on Milltown Avenue. And it was terrifying because we couldn't move. There were all these dirt bikes, ATVs, minibikes. They were surrounding us, they were going back and forth and back and forth and we really, we didn't know what to do. We witnessed individuals doing wheelies and other reckless behavior. They were on the street, on the sidewalks, and they were even on people's front lawns. And there's really nothing you can do except just sit there and hope, you know, they move on, which is eventually what happened. So the second time we got caught in a street takeover was more recent. And that was January of this year. And it was on the Route 40 connector. And it was a Saturday night, it was after midnight, and we were coming home from a friend's house in Cheshire. So we pulled onto the connector and all the lanes were closed. They, there were cars parked perpendicular on the roads and they were on both sides and also in the center. And what else? So the, okay, so we called the North Haven Police Department and it just took a while, like a long while, but finally we got ahold of someone. And he said, that's not us, to call the State Police Barracks in Bethany. So while we were doing that, we were, they were really there to stay. I mean, there was music blasting and they were out of their cars and they weren't looking to go anytime soon. So we actually considered backing up on the connector to get all the way back to Whitney Avenue, just to, you know, you, you can't think straight because you don't know, you just, you're just terrified. And, and we also felt trapped. So like I said, they had music blasting, they were out of their cars, they were going back and forth from one side of the connector to the other side of that connector. So, let's see. So, yeah, we had no idea if anybody was armed because you can't tell because it's dark. And so you don't want to like honk your horn and draw attention to yourself and then everybody turns around and, you know. So you, so finally somebody picked up at the State Police Barracks and he said that unfortunately, that the nearest trooper was about 30 to 45 minutes away. So it's like, at this point, aside from backing up on the highway to Whitney Avenue, there was nothing for us to do except sit there and hope that it ends. And it did seem like forever and you're just terrified. It's just hard to describe, you know, that terror that you're feeling. And anyway, it was less than an hour, but it was, it was a long time for us. So needless to say, I am in support of the ordinance, the illegal use of certain motor vehicles in street takeovers. I'm also in favor of the ordinance, automated traffic enforcement safety devices. Too bad we can't get the ones that take the picture because, sorry to say this, Tom, about Tom, but he was taking our son to the airport, so he was in New York to do that. And on the way back, there was nobody there. And he wasn't speeding speeding, but he went through a school zone and he didn't really see like the sign to say here in the school zone. So he was about 10 miles over. I think the, the limit was 30, maybe he was 40 or something. And so what it did was it took two pictures, a distant picture and then one of the license plate, and then it sent the ticket in the mail. And it's like, okay, they're very efficient there in New York. Yeah, so I am in favor of the, the, like I said, the traffic enforcement safety devices ordinance and the school bus violation enforcement ordinance.
Glad to hear you say that, Mary, because I can make an argument that these are the three most important issues this town is faced with in today's present environment, environment.
Yeah.
Because it's really a public safety issue.
It is.
Crashes, car accidents, recklessness, these are three of the most important issues that this government is faced with right now.
I agree, I agree. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Ray or Sally, which one would you like? Okay, so.
Ray Fowler, citizen of the town of North Haven for 53 years on Todd Drive. I want it to be known that the remarks I'm going to make have no regard for political party whatsoever, not Republican, not Democrat, not the Martian Party. It makes no difference. I'm no longer able to attend these meetings like I used to due to my three illnesses, but I do watch every one of them on television, on television. And I'm here to say that the meetings that I saw in June and July upset me to a degree I cannot adequately express. This forum has been, and should be, as was well demonstrated here this evening, about serious issues that face this town, not the June and July meetings, which I've designated popsicle politics. It's ridiculous. We should be discussing important issues. My property taxes and the last revale, my revale doubled and my taxes almost doubled. Why aren't we talking about that? Our fire and police departments are undermanned and under-equipped. God help us if a disaster like we've seen nationwide should strike North Haven. Why aren't we talking about that? On economic development, do we really need 10,000 banks and 100,000 restaurants? When are we going to have economic development that brings multiple jobs and also pay taxes and do other things? And I won't even go on to talk the way some town services have fallen by the wayside. This is not the way this town should operate. Our citizens need to have a voice about important issues, not popsicles. Not popsicles. Does anyone believe that person's vote could be bought by a popsicle? But we sure did discuss the living heck out of it at those meetings. These meetings should be a place where we, the people, can come forward and discuss important issues with our elected officials. There's an insidious disease going on in this country. It began in Washington, it came down to Hartford, and now it's come to North Haven. And it's called, "I'll be against it just because your party is for it." It doesn't matter whether the issue is substantive, it doesn't matter about the facts, just if you're against it, if you're for it, I'm against it. It's ridiculous, it's stupid, and it shouldn't be occupying vital time at these meetings that we need to discuss important issues to this town. Be waiting a minute, Mike. You've always said a cut through the news should get to the heart of it. I'm doing it again, Mike.
Okay.
You know, I think every politician in America, from the president down to the dog catcher who's elected, should remember one thing. The truth of the matter is you are just the hired help. That's all you are. You have no power. The only power any politician, from the president to the dog catcher, from Republican, Democrat, to Martian Party, the only power that. Democrat, to Martian Party, the only power that you have is the power that we, the people, allow you to have, so that you can do the job we hired you for. I sincerely believe that the people in this country even care what party it is, all they care about is, are you doing a good job? You know, you're the hired help, we give you the power, and we, the people, should take it back. I'm very glad to see a, a good crowd here tonight, because it seems like every time I watch this meeting, the seats are empty or near empty, which brings us to another problem, empathy. What happened to the caring of the citizen about the government? It's rapidly fading, and that's wrong. That's just plain wrong. Our government needs to be of the people, by the people, and for the people. That's why we have government. That's why every politician, from the president to the dog catcher, whatever party, gets hired to do the job. We shouldn't be talking about popsicles. We should be talking about vital interests to the town, vital interest to the people. We should be accountable, and every politician, in every party, in every office, should be accountable to the people, by the people, and for the people. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Ray, um, since we go back a long way, you and I, can I address some of your, your comments? Let's take economic development as an example, okay?
I knew you were coming to that.
Oh, yeah, you, you, you got it, you got me, you got me on this one, okay? So, let me tell you about economic development. We are doing everything you just said. Many times, we don't control if a property owner gets into a lease with a bank. I'll use Guilford Savings Bank as an example, right? So, we sometimes are facilitators. We don't have the final say on some of these properties. But, to your point about why aren't we creating jobs? We are creating jobs. In the past three years, Amazon has gone from three thousand employees to five thousand five hundred. They're the largest taxpayer in town right now. I am currently spending a lot of time with Medtronic, the second-largest company in North Haven. We are embarking on almost a billion dollars' worth of expansion over five years.
Well, Mike, I didn't want you to take this personally.
No, I wanted to just address it.
I didn't mean it personally.
No, it's not personal, I wanted to try to explain that we are trying to create jobs. In the Medtronic example, we're gonna be, once it's completed, phased in, over three hundred jobs from all over the country, going into North Haven. So, you know, but a lot of times, you know, if there's, like you mentioned, a bank, right? We may not be able to control a bank, but I can assure you, we're trying to create more jobs, bring more businesses in, that's what we're doing. So, and, you know, I spent a lot of time on that, as you know. So, that's what I wanted to say.
Let's do it, let's do it together.
All right, very clear.
Let's do it in harmony, let's stop the petty politics, let's forget about popsicles, and start thinking about people.
Well, I think tonight's a good example of what we're trying to...
Oh, absolutely.
You, you saw tonight, we're trying to bring, and I mentioned, there's some new people here at this meeting, and you heard me say about three times, the public was gonna, it's gonna be the public's decision whether they wanna go through this. And that's kind of the cornerstone in this government, it's a public meeting form of government. It's not a council, where there's five or seven people in terms of making the decisions on budgets and referendums. You know, we had a, we had a higher turnout this year on the budget. Do we like the fact that we had to have tax increase this year, but the property values went up forty percent in North Haven? So, when it goes up forty percent, we dropped the mill rate, five point two mils, and we still couldn't, we still could not get it down to a zero percent tax increase, because the only way to get it down was to lay off public safety, teachers, can't do that. Education and public safety are very important to us here in North Haven. So, I don't like the aberration of the forty percent increase in property value, and by the way, my colleagues all over the region are going through the same, the same problem. So, but, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm trying to give you another explanation as to what we're trying to do here. In the case of the property values, dropping the mill rate, five point two mils, it still wasn't enough. In the case of Ray's point about creating jobs and economic development, well, there's two examples, I can give you ten other examples of what we're trying to do. I'll give you one more. Across the street from the high school, I'm trying to bring a center-block district into, right across the street from the high school, on the thirty acres. If anyone has ever heard of Quarry Walk, that is in Oxford, Connecticut. That developer and I have been spending fifteen years in trying to develop this site, and now, they're gonna bring it forward. And if it goes through, we have to, to your point, Ray, about the people, we're not gonna just arbitrarily make the decision, we're gonna, we're going to go to, in this case, Quail Run, Fifty-Five and Over Community, because they're gonna be right there. We've gotta try to get them on board, we're gonna present the project. What could it be? It could be a, a small grocery store there, there'll be restaurants there, there'll be two coffee shops potentially there, we're looking at a hardware store there. These are big game changers, so it's not just about a bank or some of, like a sub-shop or something, you know, that people sometimes criticize us for, or ask us about, not necessarily criticize. But, if we can bring that there, with the tax revenue and the job creation over there, off across the street from the high school, nestled very ba, very nicely in the back against I-91, without a lot of, without a lot of problems, other than potential traffic, which is what we're talking about. So, we've got to get, handle this very carefully and get the residents on board. So, I hope that's an illustration of how we're trying to work with the residents, that's one illustration.
Let's stop talking about popsicles and talk about the issues you're talking about.
Well, Bill, you wanna, because I know you, we're not talking about popsicles, so...
Yeah, we, we didn't, we didn't talk about popsicles at all tonight, till you brought it up.
So, Ray, I can say this to you, so stop talking about popsicles, then, Ray.
You know, the, um, it, it, it's, it's, there's only, you know, it's been a difficult, it was a difficult budget season, you know, and, and it, you know, there are a lot of needs, it's sometimes it's hard to address all those needs, and at the same time, maintain a, a tax structure that'll work. You know, as I keep reading about, you know, one of the things that's a big problem for Connecticut is affordable housing, you know, and, you know, to try to come up with other ways that we can, we can, you know, my house is not affordable anymore because of, you know, the lack, how much property values have gone up for so many people now in, in Connecticut. We're lucky that, you know, I, we're lucky that, you know, we've been attract, have been able to attract younger, you know, younger people to North Haven, because we have, you know, we have good services, we have fire, you know, good fire and police, a good educational system, and, you know, I, I worry now that, you know, based on the revaluation and what everybody now expects to get for their property, that it may be, you know, may be hard for people to relocate to North Haven. So, you know, it, you know, it, it's, it's a really complicated thing. I think back to, I think back even to, you know, what the, you know, what the superintendent did during his budget presentation, our superintendent of schools, that's true for so many of our departments, ninety-five percent of, of, of the budget is, you know, is fixed cost. There's only five percent discretionary, there's not a lot of, lot of room to wiggle, I think, in the budget to, so you said, on one hand, well, you know, the property, you know, on one hand, the services have gone down, you know, but the only way the services are gonna go up is hire more people, or bring along technology. And I think today, we talked about an ordinance, or ordinances, or amendments to the ordinance, that hopefully, you know, will, you know, will complement what the police do. We talked about, and it didn't, I think there's still more work to be done, you know, I, I, we've had a number of people in Public Works be injured, you know, picking up trash. So, we talked about coming up with an automated way to pick up trash. So, maybe technology is the answer to some of this, but there's a cost to that. And there'll be a cost even for this ordinance, in terms of the, you know, but we've been very good, I think, as a, a town, as a municipality, under Mike's leadership, coming up with grants for ways maybe to supplement, you know, our tax dollars, to, to find ways that we can do things better, so.
Great, but don't let my point be muddied. My point is, this is the kind of stuff we should be talking about. This is the kind of stuff that our people should be concerned about, not petty politics, not popsicle politics. We should be talking about the kind of issues that every one of you bring up. This meeting tonight was great, I'm glad it's the first one I've been able to attend in a long time, other than all my power finale that keeps me alive. But, this is great, this is the way it should be. But, when I watched June and July, I said, "What's going on here? We're not doing the town any justice." And it's not just North Haven, as I said, Hartford, Washington, everywhere, it's an insidious disease. If you're for it, I'm against it. Why? If it's a good idea, it's a good idea, and regardless of what party, you should support it. I'm an independent voter, I vote for the person, not for the party. I vote for the person I think is gonna do a good job. So, please don't muddy my point. I'm not trying to attack anyone or any individual party. I'm simply saying, we've got to get it together.
And I'd say we do that ninety-five percent of the time, ninety-nine percent of the time.
Maybe here.
So, but I can't, I don't have any control on what they do at the state level, or, other than expressing maybe similar thoughts to our elected officials, who sometimes don't have much weight to throw up there either, so. But, I think we, I think for the most part, we do what you're recommending, at least ninety-five, if not ninety-nine percent of the time.
I, I'm sorry, I got a single hand here, so...
Okay, just really quickly, yeah, I, I share your concern, Mr. Fowler, about your tax increase, and as Bill said, it was a very challenging budget season, and the revale certainly impacted the increase in taxes, especially for residential homeowners, there was a shift of increasing the burden on residences. So, I agree with Bill that it was a challenging budget season because of the revale, but also, there was a nine million dollar increase in our budget, nine million dollars of additional spending. So, that also added to the tax burden, but that budget was soundly passed, so...
And Ray, in conjunction with that, because you, you want, these are, these are good topics to talk about, when health insurance goes up a significant amount, debt service goes up, because we built a new police department, we're still paying them on that, we're still paying, we're paying on the middle school, when our debt service goes up, and those are, these are driving factors that come into play in the aggregate amount of increases. So, we've gotta do a better job at it, there's no question about it. But, yeah, to your point earlier, there's a movement to increase some of the things you've asked, you've talked about, how come we're not adding this or that? Well, it's cost, that's why, and it's trying to balance the cost versus the tax, the tax burden, that's the real, that's the real issue. So, we're looking at adding staff in a certain part of town to help public safety, but that's gonna be between five hundred and million, five hundred thousand and million dollars. So, we've got issues, we've got, we've got things that are being presented, presented to me to increase, whether it's public safety, increase other parts of the town that are very critical, education's a good example, special ed's a good example. So, you gotta balance, how are we gonna, to you, this goes back to your point, how do we control the tax rate, and then still add some of the things that the public would like to see?
Well, you see, I got what you're talking about.
Well, to your, to your point, Mike, you've often said, the, the challenge of local budgeting is to balance the wants and needs with what the taxpayers could afford.
Right.
And this year, they voted yes to nine million dollars in increased spending. So, we'll see what happens next year.
Yes.
Okay.
And on a relative basis, we get very little from the state of Connecticut, or the federal government. So, we're, you know, we're basically, whatever we do, we're, you know, less than like, three, four percent of our bu, of our revenue, you know, side of the budget comes from, from the, from the state, or, and really, nothing from the federal government, because it all comes through the state. So, we're really funding ourselves, everything that we're doing here comes out of all of our pockets.
All right, Susie, I know you, oh, you're good, okay, we're good, all right. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? With that...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Motion, is there a second?
Did that other lady wanna talk, though?
No, she said no.
I'm sorry.
I just acknowledged that, she said no. All right, so, second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing done, all those in failure?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks for attending, and thanks for a good meeting.
Jeff, you could've lasted a good meeting.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.